Another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, welcome. We're super glad you're here today.
We are. We're also so excited to have the incredible Colin and Julie with us. Hey guys, welcome.
Hello.
How's it going everyone?
We are here today to talk about getting started with text marketing, which is one of the many things that you can do with your Get Oiling system to stay in touch with your leads and with your customers and team. So head over, excuse me, into the chat. Let us know where in the world you are. We're always excited to meet our folks here. I should note just here up at the top, there are a lot of services that provide text marketing, and most of them are limited to just the US and Canada. Obviously, we are based here in the US and Canada. But this text service and what we'll be talking about today applies to you in over 200 countries across the world. Because that is something that you're able to get here with Get Oiling if you are using us for text. So again, we welcome you from wherever you are. We're excited to have you here. This is a free call that we offer every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time as a service to the Young Living community. If you're looking for ways to work smarter and streamline how you grow your Young Living brand partner business, we have got so many great resources for you. I hope you'll stick around. I hope you'll give us a shot. We are a dollar for your first month. We have everything that you need to run your business, whether you're just getting started or you are managing a Royal Crown Diamond business all the way through that spectrum. So what we're going to do first here is our team's going to pop out a video. I'm going to get into some slides and then we will hop on together. We'll chat and talk about any questions that you may or may not have throughout this process. Because today I want to make sure that you are confident to get started with text. So first, again, like I mentioned, we will start with our slides. Let me get my, my Q and A positioned over here so I can see it if it pops up. All right, good to go. All right. So again, welcome. We are going to talk about how to get started with text marketing and Get Oiling today. So first, we'll talk about the features in Get Oiling that allow you to send texts and how they work. We'll talk about how to use them very specifically at the close of our presentation part of today's call. I'll actually go through and demonstrate how they work. And then we'll talk about here in the slides, how you'll use them in terms of context, right? So in what instances, when would you choose to use either or, or several of them? And then we'll talk about how you can get started and get into some best practices because this is while simple and, and of course, text marketing, most of us send texts on our phone. It can seem intuitive. But there are definitely a couple of things that you want to remember and keep in mind so that this is something that is successful for you off the bat and then of course, ongoing. And then as always, we have live help and Q and A. If you have questions as we're going through today's content, if you've arrived here today with questions, maybe you need help with something, you have questions, even if they don't pertain to today's topic, you can please add those to the Q and A. We can make sure that our team can get to them. And after our presentation, I'm happy to get to those as well. If you're watching this as a broadcast in our Facebook group or on our YouTube channel later on as a recording, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to get on the list so you can join these live Zoom calls. It's a great opportunity to connect with your community and get hands-on help and support. Again, whether you're just getting started, whether you're super comfortable with tech or you're brand new, we are here to help and we've got great resources to do so. If you would like to go in depth on something that you're working on, or you just feel like you need to have your hand held to walk through a concept or getting something started with your Get Oiling system, you can go to getoiling.com/web site review. Let us know what you need help with. And you can sit with us on a call like this one. We do reserve the second half of these calls for this purpose. So if you have something a bit more involved, it's not just a question, maybe a series of them, feel free to take advantage of this free thing that we offer. We do allow this for our customers anytime you want on a Thursday call, right? The second half of our Thursday calls, we can spend some time together. So you can grab a space there. And if you would like to skip the line for that and just hop right into having someone else do some of this stuff for you, bring some of these visions that you might have for your business to life, you can go to getoiling.com/conceiers, get to know our incredible team, set up a call with them and get a quote for your project. All right. So if you're here today, let me know, maybe raise your hand or let me know in the chat. Are you using text messaging to stay connected? Now, this doesn't necessarily have to mean you are marketing specifically using sales-designed, marketing-designed messages that you send out, but maybe you are regularly communicating with your customers by sending them texts, right? Or that's how you are communicating. What does that look like for you? Are you using texts? And if you aren't using texts yet, tell us a little bit about that. Is that, are you more of a pick up the phone and call somebody person? Are you more of an email person? Or are you just maybe curious, but you know, don't quite feel confident yet in getting your feet wet? Let us know in the chat. So if you didn't know, with Get Oiling, you can send broadcast messages. You can also send automated drip sequences. And you can chat back and forth to your contacts' phone and you're, you're typing in your Get Oiling system, just like you would if you were in Facebook Messenger or WhatsApp or something like that. You can do all of that with Get Oiling all in one place, in the same place that you have your website, your member area. Where you have your records of, of when you've reached out to someone and, and all of the notes that you have for that contact. All of this is something that you can do in one place with Get Oiling and we with texting are not limited to the US and Canada. There are many countries that you can use this texting feature in Get Oiling. Obviously with Get Oiling, you can be anywhere in the world and use us. But with texting, there is a very, very high chance regardless of where you are, that you are able to use our text features. So text messaging with Get Oiling is as follows. Let's talk about our features that include the use of text messaging. First, we have two-way texting. So this is essentially a way for you to use your own business phone number, right? It's a separate from your actual phone number today. It is a separate one. And you're actually able to receive calls on this phone number as well. It'll just go straight to your phone. It's pretty cool. So you can send your texts direct from the Get Oiling system. And then of course, you can respond to texts with our chat feature. Which if you have that in an app on your phone is super easy to do. And then you can also send broadcast messages out to one or many. So that two-way texting, again, is chatting, right? It's, it's you are maybe communicating one-on-one with someone who is in your system as a contact. So maybe it's a customer of yours and you're talking back and forth. So you've got two-way texting. Then if you wanted to send out a broadcast, maybe you wanted to broadcast a note that you've put together with links and information about Ningxia or about the, the 14-day reset, you could send that out to one person or you could collect maybe 10 contacts that you want to get this information out to, and you can send it out to 10 at a time. That's sending a text broadcast. And then finally, you can use campaigns, which are a really cool automated tool that allow you to set it and forget it and send messages out at intervals. Whether that be evergreen, based on when an action takes place, or something that might be date-based. And we'll get into some of those details here in a bit, right? So they can also text in. So if you wanted somebody to say, text the word "reset" to your business phone number, and they automatically would then receive some information from you about Ningxia and the 14-day reset. This is something that you can set up with campaigns. So let's talk a little bit more about when you might choose to use these different features. First, we've got the chat button. If you're in your Get Oiling system, it's going to be up in the right-hand corner of the screen on a desktop and it says chat. When you click it, you are going to be entering the space, the portal for two-way texting. This is where you can chat back and forth with people who are in your contacts, right? So this is your back and forth chatting. They text you, you text them. And of course, the texting that's happening is you're typing into the screen there in your Get Oiling system, and they are receiving those messages in their phone, just as though you were chatting, texting phone-to-phone. Broadcasts are something that you're going to use again, when you're sending maybe something that's an announcement. So this would be, maybe there's a, a change of venue. You had an event and, and you're supposed to be at a particular location, but there has been a change. You want to get the information out quickly to the people that need to know about it. You would be able to send something time-sensitive via a broadcast or an announcement, right? So maybe there is, you know, something that's back in stock and you want to connect with the people that you know use that product. And you want to send that announcement out. This would be a great use for that. And this is also fantastic for sharing a single piece of information. So for instance, if maybe you are active on Instagram and, and you're talking about your results from using the 14-day reset, following the reset and, you know, maybe you're feeling a lot better and you're mentioning, hey, you know, DM me your number and I will send you my notes on what I'm doing and information on how to get started. So maybe in that case, somebody shoots you a DM, they give you their phone number, you're going to add them to your system and send them a single message. This would be a broadcast using a single piece of information. So maybe you have a saved reply that's got information about the reset and a link for them to get started. Now, a campaign is a really interesting, powerful tool that allows you to automate. So essentially, in this case, we're going to use campaigns the majority of the time for evergreen sequences. So think, you know, maybe somebody is a new customer and they prefer to receive text as opposed to email. So your welcome campaign where you are telling them just a little bit at a time about Young Living, maybe there is an email, or sorry, a text initially that, that explains loyalty rewards. Maybe four days later, you're going to talk about seed to steal. Maybe five days later, you're going to ask them how things are going. On the 12th day, you'll ask them if they got their order, et cetera, right? So you can set up a sequence like this that you can use over and over again, right? So in that example of maybe a, a new customer, you're, you could, you'll be able to use that sequence for every single new customer that you have, right? You could also do this for lead nurturing and for education. So if you want to take a very complicated concept such as the endocrine system, right? Or, or maybe even a particular product line. So things like the Juva line where you've got all of these liver-supporting products. You don't want to send them an entire dissertation in a single text or even all at once. You might want to drip out concepts. Over time, a campaign would be a fantastic use for that. And then you can also use campaigns via text as a, as a tool to engage people for set periods of time. So say you have an event and you want to text them a reminder for when your call is going to go live or reminding them that your meeting is tonight, and then maybe following up and sending an email or rather a campaign in this case, the next day, a text campaign the next day that says, you know, thanks for coming. What kind of questions do you have, et cetera? Text campaigns are also fantastic for challenges. If you're going to be engaging with people on an ongoing basis, you want them to maybe respond to you via text to let you know that they have performed that day's task. Right? Or if you want to send a reminder, et cetera. So campaigns are a set sequence or interval of messages that you would create that you'll use over and over again for different purposes. All right. So if you click the chat button from your dashboard, if you don't currently have two-way texting, there is a add-on fee for this. It's not included with your Good Oil Link system. But if you want to start using text, excuse me, if you want to start using two-way texts with your own phone number, then you can click the chat button from your dashboard. You'll be able to select your own business phone number. And you'll be able to get started, right? And if you already have a number that you're using with another text service, you can port your number into Get Oiling the vast majority of the time. You just need to reach out to our team that's support at goodoiling.com and they can help you get that done. It's simply a matter of a couple of steps being put into place. It can take a few days. Sometimes a touch longer depending on where it's coming in from, but you can, you can get that done with our team. Now, a quick note. There is a way to send text from your Get Oiling system without having two-way texting. It's just not optimal, right? So you are able to send texts out without having your own number selected. It's just going to add on some additional verbiage to the message that's being sent that indicates that they can't reply to that number. Right? Because it's going to be coming from a Get Oiling-based number. And so when they respond, you're not going to get that message, right? So if you want to be able to chat back and forth with your people from a phone number that they can text back and that they can call back, you want to make sure that you've got two-way texting enabled. All right? And then once you have your two-way texting phone number set up, don't forget to go in and update your contact information in Get Oiling with this new number so that folks can call and text you. So from there, once you've got it, you can begin chatting with your contacts back and forth using that chat feature in your Get Oiling system. And of course, if you send a message to them using a campaign, using a broadcast, they can reply and you can carry on your conversation in chat. Now, before you go and send a broadcast or apply a campaign, a text broadcast or campaign to your contacts, first, please make sure that whoever you are about to send a broadcast to many or a campaign to, please make sure that you have obtained permission from those people to send marketing messages. Now, it's one thing to just send a single message to one person that is intended to initiate a conversation. That's not a permission situation in the same way as I am going to send you 17 different emails in a sequence about Young Living's liver-supporting product line, right? If they didn't ask for that, please don't do it, right? It's really important that you take the step to obtain express permission before you start sending messages like this. Okay? Because when you are, and this is true about email as well, but it's especially sharp with text because the regulations tend to be a little tighter and the consequences felt a bit more swiftly. You are building a reputation when you begin sending marketing messages using a text provider such as ours. And you want to make sure that that reputation that you're building is a strong one, right? That means that people are opening the messages that you send. They're not ignoring them. They are responding to them or they are clicking the links that they contain. They're engaging with that. And that indicates that that person wants to get that information from you, right? So if you are sending stuff out that nobody is responding to and/or worse, that nobody asked for and that they are, you know, replying stop, marking spam or ignoring wholly, that will affect negatively your ability to send messages out like this to others in the future. All right. So it is important to be mindful when you're going about using a feature like this. You want to build a good reputation and you want to maintain it, right? Now, if you are already sending messages to people who've given you permission and you're doing that through another platform, you can absolutely import that database from that platform into your Get Oiling system, just like you would import your contacts from your virtual office in Young Living. Just make sure that you have tagged them accordingly as people who have given you permission to send texts. And then finally, if you are just getting started, start small with a safe list of people that you know will open, respond or click so that you can get off to a strong start in building that sending score, that sending reputation. All right? So it would be really beneficial for you before you start again, sending to lots of people to maybe have a small group of your core people. This could even be a couple of friends. If you're just getting started, ask a favor of them and say, hey, I'm just going to be sending you a few things. If you could just make sure that you open and click or open and reply, that would really help me a lot, right? And you've got a few friends that'll do that for you with you. That will help you a great deal in the future. Now, one thing that we do want to make sure that we cover because we are talking about making use of a powerful part, an integral part of your Get Oiling system. We want to talk about how we measure what we're sending out and what that essentially costs you, right? So the first thing to know is that your plan, depending on what plan that is, or if you signed up during a promotion that comes with extra marketing credits, your plan comes with this internal currency called marketing credits that you can use to send out your emails and your texts to your contacts. Now, if you ever run out of credits because maybe you are promoting something heavily this month, just know that you can add more as needed and those credits do roll over. All right. So if you don't use them all this month, that's okay. They do roll over, I believe, for a period of three months. Now, marketing credits work as follows. First, for emails, this is the simplest one. If you send emails, one email to one person equals one credit, one email to 50 people equals 50 credits. That's the equation there for email. Now, if you're sending an SMS, now this is pure text, okay? No images. Pure text up to 160 characters. One of those texts to one person is 15 credits. But if you send them an MMS, now this is going to include things like images of which you can attach 10 to a single message in Get Oiling, which is pretty cool. One MMS to one person is 40 credits and that is regardless of the length of the message. Now, we do have a help article on this where if you want to read about this in detail, just go to our help center. That's a little question mark inside of your Get Oiling system. Click that, type in marketing credits and you can see this all spelled out very clearly for you. And then another important thing to remember is that if you're using the two-way texting feature with that chat button, you click the chat button and you're chatting back and forth with someone there in a thread, that does not use marketing credits. Right? Because that's not marketing. That's communicating. That's just chatting back and forth. But you are going to, if you're sending out, broadcasting out information, that is going to take up 15 credits if it's an SMS up to 160 characters. Of course, if it's longer, you will obviously spend more than 15 credits. And then of course, with an MMS, it'll be 40 credits regardless of how long it is. And again, you can attach up to 10 images to a single MMS message, message with Get Oiling. All right. Now let's get into some best practices. We did talk just a little bit about what it looks like to get started and I definitely would categorize most of what I've already said where that stuff is concerned as best practices, especially where you're talking about developing that initial good reputation with good practices out of the gate, using permission. And then of course, being mindful and making sure that what you're sending is stuff that people are actually engaging with. Well, let's take this a step further. As you are moving forward with text marketing, first, you want to make sure based on where you are, that you are familiar with local laws and regulations for marketing communications. This is really important because this can get you in a lot of hot water and maybe potentially cost you a great deal of money, right? So fairly recently, T-Mobile in the US has said that they will, they will fine you, I want to say it's like up to a thousand dollars for sending a single text with the, with the phrase CBD in it. Right? So maybe just don't use CBD at all on your website or in any text messages that you send. I would avoid even sending emails that have CBD in them. It's unfortunate. It's just a part of where our culture is right now. If you want to educate on this topic specifically, the absolute best place to put this information is going to be inside of a vault that is password-protected in your member area on your website. You can absolutely talk about Young Living's CBD line there and, and discuss it to your heart's content. But please, please make sure that you are not putting this into your text messages, especially in the US. And unless someone has signed up for a series that sells pitches, markets, something, make sure that what you're writing is written like you were just going to send a quick message to a friend. I'll repeat that. When people receive messages, they will respond to something that's written like it was written for them. If it's written like it was meant to push something onto a lot of people, people are more likely to ignore that, not engage with it. That affects your reputation in terms of sending, right? As someone that appears to be sending information that people want to receive, right? So you want to make sure that you are only sending stuff that people want. So the majority of the time, the messages that you write need to sound like you are writing it just to that person. This is the same as I, I teach about email, right? People want to receive things that feel like it's for them, like it's personal. So write that way. Now, obviously there are exceptions here. If someone says, I would like to be educated on Young Living's Ningxia products and you've got a campaign that teaches about Ningxia products and they specifically know that they are going to receive a series of messages that talk about Ningxia products, then by all means, use the beautiful marketing language that's written up by our content partners, right? By all means, do that. But if they didn't sign up for something like that, you want to make sure you don't send stuff like that, right? Only send stuff that people have asked for because the consequences of not paying attention to this and just sending people texts because you have their number can mean that you don't wind up being delivered to the people that actually want to get stuff from you in the future, right? So write like you're writing to a friend and you will typically avoid these pitfalls. And then as you're writing, like you would write to a friend, consider writing with the expectation of a response, right? So keep the message brief and ask them a question. Expect that they are going to respond to you so that you can carry that conversation on in your two-way texting. Again, obviously, this is going to create an exception where again, you might have a very specific use case or purpose for an educational sequence, right? Where someone signed up to be educated in messages over a period of time. But again, in all other cases, make it personal and expect a response because isn't that the case that we want most of what we're sending out to create a response? So that we can have a conversation that has them connecting to their next favorite product from Young Living, right? So allow these to be tools to help you get better at, at communicating in this way. And of course, increasing your business accordingly with those conversations that make the biggest difference. And another best practice is this is especially true of campaigns. This is 100% true of campaigns that educate that are not meant to be conversation starters. In the first message of your campaign that you create, it is a best practice to include the verbiage. Text "stop" or if you have another word set up instead of "stop", for them to be able to opt out of that campaign, right? It is really helpful and you've probably seen this before if you've opted in for texts. The first message that you get typically says, "Reply 'stop' to end these messages. Now, I will say this, it is advantageous for you to maybe consider setting up another word that, that isn't "stop" because "stop" is going to stop them from getting anything from you and they'll have to opt themselves back into text, right? So you could use a different word. You would be setting that up via an automation. Or you could, you know, go to another campaign from there. There's a lot of different options that we won't necessarily get into today. It's a bit more advanced. But you can use "stop" or another word so that they stop receiving that sequence. All right. So let's go take a look at these features in action and get into you guys' questions. There is a question here already. Let me go ahead and change my share here so that we can demonstrate. Dawn says, does broadcast go to each person individually or does it show up as a text group where everyone sees who is in the group? That is going to go to everyone individually, Dawn. So you could send a text to a thousand people right now. And if you're using, so let's just say for instance, here, I'm going to send email text or an app notification. I'm going to send just one message via text. And that's going to go to all of my contacts. And if I'm using things like these personalization tags, so I can say, you know, hey, are you busy on Saturday? At 2:00. Right? And I could go and send this out and this is going to show up for each of those people, just like you sent it to that person, right? So when this arrives in Joe's phone, it's going to say, hey, Joe, are you busy on Saturday at 2:00? And it's going to be coming from Jane. And of course, you can schedule this. Again, you can add your images here if you want. And you do see a character count here and it will give you an estimate for how many credits. So in this case, I'm sending to this many people. It's 15 credits apiece. So this is how many marketing credits I am about to use for sending to them, right? So it will actually give you that information. But let me back up here real quick before we get too far into the weeds. First, you want to go to chat here and I do have two-way. First, you want to go to chat here, and I do have two-way texting set up on this account, so you, you can actually go straight into chat. And you can see all of your, uh, sort of text back and forths here. And, uh, you can start new chats. It will, it does have to be folks who are in your contacts. Uh, and this is how you go back and forth, right? When you send these messages, uh, these do not count against your marketing credits, and of course, they can send back to you. As you can see, um, there are hi and hello. There's some back and forth here, right? Okay, so that is, uh, that's our two-way texting with our chat feature. Uh, I did just demonstrate how to set up a broadcast to one or many. So again, I, I showed how I could send it to everyone. I could also filter, uh, for a contact. There we go, and just send a text to one contact here as well, right? So if I wanted to just, maybe I have a saved reply where I'm going to talk about, um, alkaline. There we go. I've got a saved reply that's got this information. This will be an MMS that will go out. Uh, so I'll say, hey, again, um, personalization. Here's the info you asked for. Let me know if you have any questions. Right? So now I can send this off. You can see that because this is an MMS, it's forty credits. It's going to one person. And I've got two images attached here that I conveniently had saved in my saved replies, which is pretty cool. You can use saved replies for text. It's particularly good if you want to attach, uh, things like this that send, uh, quick pieces of information out. This again, um, is something that you would only want to send if someone asked for it specifically. Alright, so that's a broadcast to one. I've already shown you a broadcast to many. Now let's quickly go and take a look at campaigns. Now, campaigns are, there's a lot of different ways you can use them. We also have a lot of training on campaigns, uh, that I invite you to check out. Uh, but let's go take a quick look here at how we can set up a text-based campaign. So this one will maybe be our new member, welcome. And, uh, that's new member welcome, and I'm going to indicate that this is going to be for text specifically. And I'm going to choose send by text only. And I can also, maybe if I want people to be able to opt themselves into it, I can use the word welcome. And here's how you can actually, um, opt out. You can have them opt out of the welcome sequence. Right? So here we'll say, um, reply thanks, and, uh, and this, uh, sequence will stop sending, right? Again, this is allowing you to get around the stop keyword, because if you, if you want them to be able to maybe stop receiving this specific campaign, but maybe they want to receive other campaigns from you, use the alternate text opt-out keyword here, right? Because stop, again, is going to remove your permission to text them at all. So you can use this, and you do want to make sure that this is the keyword that you're telling them to use in that first message. Alright, so this is going to go out, uh, daily. That's our, our normal way of sending. You can send out a fast campaign, or maybe it's, you know, every three minutes you send out a text. So maybe that's like a quick text class. I think that's a really great idea through educating on a product. You don't necessarily have to drip every single day. It's kind of up to you depending on what it is that you want to use. Now, this sequential text and keyword, um, this is, um, something that you could add in here if you wanted them to maybe, um, get the faster version of this, right? So maybe welcome, uh, we can type in the word welcome fast, and then that will change the speed from daily to minute, and they could just get everything that they want in one place. So here we go. You can obviously modify the country. Alright, so I'm going to create the campaign. Alright, and here, I'm going to go down to text message of sent by text. So this is just gonna, I'm going to put in day one. This is not going to show up for them because I'm going to, actually, this is day zero. Um, they're not going to see that, because they're only going to see what we put here. So what we'll do is we'll say, um, we'll say welcome. And, um, I'm so, let's see, we'll say, I'm so excited to have you on our team. This is maybe a new brand partner. Um, head over here now to get started. And maybe you can put a link here to your member area, or you could put a link to whatever, right? It's totally up to you. Uh, put in the link. And then, um, if you want to stop receiving uh, messages from this sequence, reply with thanks. Want all of them quickly? Reply with welcome fast. And then you could also say reply with stop to opt out completely. So something like this would be a great first message, uh, that includes everything that they need to know. They can scroll up and reference it in, in the, the thread with you, right? Um, add images if you want to. It's not necessary. I'll go ahead and save this message, and this will be the one that goes out automatically. So we can continue to add messages here that'll go out at a sequence. So maybe I, I want to send the next one, maybe two days later. So that'll be on day two. Say day two here. And so here we'll say, again, personalize with their name. So I'll say, hey, checking in. Were you able to get access to the materials I sent you? Right? And you don't have to say anything else here, because remember, we want to engage. Let them reply. So we save the message. And then that goes out, right? So this is how I would prefer to set it up. Another way that you can do this, depending on what it is that you are going to say, um, is, uh, your, your message can be sent, like if you have something longer here in the body, um, it can go out as sort of like an excerpt, and it says, read more here. And then they click and they open. It goes to a page that's been generated for your site that has all the information here. As a general rule with text marketing, I don't recommend that approach. Definitely recommend something simpler like this, and then, of course, um, attaching images where they make sense. Uh, but keeping this, you know, short, to the point, and expecting a response is always going to be uh, the more effective way to go. So we've now covered, uh, chatting. We've covered broadcasting, and of course, we have covered your, uh, your campaigns and some of the ways that you can set them up for sending. So let's go into, uh, our chat and see, or Q and A, and see what kind of questions you have. Okay, could there, uh, this could be for email or texting. Allison says, we've had new contacts come from a landing page that has to do with, for instance, homeschooling. And they are tagged as such. Um, then they shouldn't get a general email text newsletter that isn't exclusively homeschool related. Then I feel like I would need different lists, homeschooling, health, young living members, general friends. You do need different lists. That's correct. So if someone is opting in, and they are opting into something that is expressly talking about homeschooling, um, unless you say on that page, hey, by the way, here's the homeschooling thing. Um, I send out emails on a weekly basis, or however often, that talk about A, B, C, and D. When you sign up, know that you're going to be getting those as well. Right? And then I just want to make sure that you're keeping things congruent. Uh, so if you are stating clearly on that opt-in, uh, page, uh, what they're going to be getting, just make sure that you're tagging them accordingly, and you only send them what they ask for, whether that's email or text. Um, but one hundred percent, period, your Young Living members are going to have a different tag than everyone else, because you are going to be communicating with them sometimes in a very different way than you would be communicating with other people on your list that don't know anything about Young Living yet. And having those separate tags there as well, uh, where maybe, you know, there are folks who sign up, uh, for things that are health-related, or maybe you have like an opt-in that says, I'm interested in, and then it will tag them with homeschool, health, et cetera. Um, then you'll, you're able to, you know, maybe if something comes up that's new that you create, or you're offering something new that pertains to that topic, you can very easily go and find those people and send really specific direct messages to them based on those interests that they've expressed. For clicking on the fast button, do, we have options to say how fast, or is it every three minutes? No, so it actually is set up every one minute, right? And just like your campaigns are set up for a message every day, so day zero is immediately, always. But day one is the next day. If you set up the fast campaign, day zero is still immediate, but then one is going to be one minute later. So if you want to do a fast campaign where someone will receive the first message, obviously, again, immediately, that's zero. But if you want it to be five minutes later, you put five. If you want to send something every five minutes for an hour, then you could set something like that up as well. So that's, it's basically, it changes the interval from days to minutes. So you do have, um, a choice as to what the length there looks like. Do know that depending on, uh, on coverage, where that person is, et cetera, um, the amount of time it takes for a message to send is not super duper precise, just like with email. You can schedule it for eleven o'clock, but depending on how often somebody's inbox refreshes data, they may not receive it until three o'clock, you know? Alright, how would you recommend moving from a text provider to Get Oiling, starting from scratch? By texting everyone, getting opt-in permission. So if you are already using a texting provider, and you are currently texting those people who you have in that database, uh, then what you would want to do is just port your existing number from there over to Get Oiling, and then carry on as usual. Right? Maybe let them know that there is going to be, you know, you might not hear from me for a day or two, right? Uh, and so that you can get that number ported over. Uh, but, uh, but, but yeah, if you're moving over from an existing provider where you've already obtained permission, then all you really need to do is port your number, and then just do what you were already doing. Alright, how do you set up a campaign for an event with timely reminders, including the day before, day of, and an hour before? Great question, Laureen. Let's go take a look at that. This is a really, uh, great use case for events. Um, so, um, let's talk about that specifically. So maybe your event is going to be on Saturday, uh, maybe at, uh, at three o'clock in the afternoon. So we'll create a campaign, and maybe let's, let's make it next Saturday at three in the afternoon. That way we can, uh, get, um, really thorough with this. So this will be for, um, let's see, next Saturday. So that'll be for the thirteenth. So, um, that will be, uh, live event, uh, for thirteen twenty-four. You could give it a different name. Obviously, if you're, if it's titled, you could go ahead and put that information in here. This will be a text campaign. And we're going to apply this text campaign uh, when they RSVP, so we're not going to worry about a text in keyword. You can, uh, use an opt-out keyword if you want. Uh, but again, because they have just opted in on a page, uh, and you can, you know, share all of that information there, this is a, a little bit less important than it would be in other cases. Alright, so we'll create the campaign. And this is going to be a date-based campaign. So the first thing that we're going to send is a, this is going to be a welcome uh, confirmation. I'm just going to say confirmation here. So that I know what it is, and I'm going to come down here to text message, and this is where I'm going to say, um, you know, hey, you're confirmed, and then put the information. Right? And so I'll put, um, date, time, location. And then, um, I'll tell them to hit reply, or or I'll just say, let me know. Let me know if you have any questions. Alright, so I'll save that, and that's going to go out automatically, regardless of when they register. Now, the next thing that we want to add is maybe a reminder the day before. So this is a reminder day before. And we're going to say, hey, just a reminder. Our event is tomorrow at three PM. Look forward to seeing you there. Okay, so I'll save that. And we're going to reorder, um, or renumber these as needed once we add the date, but I'm going to go ahead and just keep adding the messages that I know that I need. So the next one will be, uh, a, we could do a reminder day of. This is not absolutely necessary, but just going to show you what this looks like. So I'll say, excited to see you at three. And then information, right? So this would again be like the location, time, here's where you park, or whatever kind of information you want to include here. Then maybe we want to send some things afterward, right? So this will be, uh, day after. Alright, so, uh, then, obviously, you're not going to necessarily say, great, just to you, just in case this person didn't show. Um, but, uh, you might want to say, um, you know, wow, yesterday, yesterday's event was a blast. Here's the information I shared, so you can review it and put a link in there. Uh, and then, what did you learn that you didn't know before? Right? Uh, again, expecting a response. Okay, so now we can go in and play around with this, right? So we know that our campaign is going to be date-based, right? So we're going to set, have this start on a specific date. And we know that, uh, we want to send something out the day before. So let's go. If we know that the, um, that Saturday is when our event is, then we need to adjust, right? So if I, if I actually put this the day before, you see that this actually sends on the day, because we're doing it on the thirteenth. So we need to put it two days before if we're doing a day before reminder. So adjust until the dates look how you want them to look, right? So now we know this is, if our event is on the thirteenth at three PM, we have the first message after the confirmation, which will go out immediately when they RSVP, however you're setting up your RSVP. Um, that's going to go out the day before. This is going to go out the day of. And of course, this goes out the day after. Now you want to adjust the time sent, right? Because the default message is, uh, sending time is five PM Central US time, and that's obviously based on where you are. That might, might affect this considerably. So edit the message dates and times. Uh, so the day before reminder, let's maybe send that at the end of the day. And then the day of, because we know that we're going to be meeting at three o'clock. If this is in person, I'll send it in the morning. If this is a, um, a virtual event, I'll maybe send this an hour or two hours before. So the specific time here, we'll send at nine AM. Great. And then the day after, maybe we'll send that also at nine AM. So now you have it set up to where you're fully automated. If someone RSVPs, they get the confirmation with all of the information, location, et cetera. Uh, you send out a reminder the day before the event, regardless of when they registered. You send out a reminder the day of. Again, this is optional. You could choose one or both of these two. And then you could send your day after, and maybe even a day after that, and so on. You can extend this, uh, as long as you like. So that is how you would create that. Thank you for that question, Laureen. I hope that was clear. Alright, Allison says, I'm not sure I clarified that they were going to be getting other info. So then if I wanted to start slow, would it be sufficient to send a monthly email for each of the four different lists? So I'm sending out the weekly emails, but to different tags. Um, Allison, could you respond in the chat and let me know, like, maybe roughly the size, like what, how, how big of a group is this? Um, that you would maybe be sending something to? Because if it's not a ton of people, and, and I think another question that I would love for, okay, so less than fifty for each. Okay, so what's the total volume of people that you're, you're planning to maybe send some kind of an update out to? And how connected are you to those people? Are most of these people people that you know? That you've maybe met in person, or that are part of groups that you're a part of? Um, you know, folks who have heard from you before? It sounds like it's, you know, we're a couple hundred people at the absolute most, right? If that's the case, right? Now, this is not the same advice I would give to somebody who, you know, has a, a diamond or platinum business or bigger that has thousands and thousands and thousands of people uh, in, in their contact manager. Um, or someone obviously who's, who's been building a database, uh, for a, a good length of time. Um, yeah, so Allison, I would just send a message out to those folks, uh, all of them, and just say, hey, here's an update. Here's what I plan to do. Hit reply and let me know if you'd rather not, right? So if you tell them, I'm going to be talking about this and that and that and the other, I would love for you to hit reply and let me know If, you know, there are other things you'd like to know about or whatever, right? So what I would do, Alison, is absolutely do not complicate this by trying to like create four different messages for four different groups. We're ultimately talking about a small group of people, most people don't pay that close of attention. And if they know you, they love you, they don't really care too much and they'll actually tell you something if you ask them to tell you, right? So I would just send out a message that, that expects a response from them. Maybe definitely put into the subject line. Can you do me a favor? And then ask the question and the favor is respond to me and give me an answer. That way, the people who know that they would rather not. Can tell you they'd rather not and you can make those adjustments. It's not going to be so many people that it would be loads and loads of work for you or an assistant to handle all of their responses. It, for a list of, you know, under two hundred people. You're only probably going to have twenty or so people on the upper end that will actually respond. Unless this is a group of good friends, in which case lots of conversations, which those all open opportunity for you in this business. So keep young living as is. Send a message to everyone else and let them know your intentions and, and then ask their preferences. Because you may get topic requests from them and that's good for you and it's good for them. And then of course, if they say I'd rather not, can you just keep me on this other stuff? Then you can make those modifications. But yeah, I, for, for a list that size, I would not create automations to the nth degree. That is way too much time for you to spend on something that you can get done pretty quickly by just shooting an email out to them. No, you're, you're not giving them too many options, Alison. You're asking them to respond to you and to tell you what they want. That's one option. They could say whatever they want when they respond to you and you can choose what you do with it. Essentially, you're going to say, here are the things I'm going to be talking about. If you would like to continue receiving this information, you're good to go. If you have things you'd like to hear from me, respond and tell me what you'd like to hear. And if you'd rather not, or you, you want, you know, only specific types of things from me, then tell me. You're giving them one choice and that's a good thing. Hit reply and tell me something. And then you let them tell you. So that's, it's pretty simple. If they don't respond, don't worry about it. Like that's, if, if they're not paying attention, you don't really need to be concerned with it. If they're already on your list, they're on your list. So you can continue messaging them moving forward. You obtain permission from them at some point. You have sent out that message saying, hey, by the way, you know, haven't been sending out a lot of stuff. I plan to send more if you would like, I can modify. Let me know, hit reply. Maybe if, if it'll make you feel better, you can maybe put that hit reply at the, at the bottom of all the messages that you send out for a while to that group. And that will allow you to, you know, have that dialogue with people. But again, for a list that's under two hundred people, I wouldn't go down automation rabbit holes, opt out rabbit holes, et cetera for yourself. Keep it simple, it's not that big of a list to manage, so let them respond to you. Okay, so Laureen, how do we have them opt in for emails or text preference and how does it work? So. This is going to really depend on the use case, but in the case of the event that we were just discussing. What I would do is wherever you're collecting the registration for the event, maybe it's just in your events manager. You're going to apply this campaign and it's going to be a text only campaign, right? In this case, if you want it to be text or you could make it email or a combination of the two. State clearly where you are getting the opt in. Now, if you're doing this on a page or a landing page, you could do this as well. State clearly that I will be sending you messages via text and you, then you want to make sure that phone is a required field. Right, and so that way you've got that set up there. So. I don't recommend that anybody duplicate their efforts and send out the same content via email and text every time you send something out. Most of us don't have lists that are that big or that responsive to warrant that degree of effort and work on your part. It's just not that profitable of an activity for you to engage in. So what I would do is create text resources, create email resources purposefully. Right, so I'm going to create this campaign that is only going to be sent by a text because I know that after I have that in person event. I want to pick up the phone and call every single person. So I must get your phone number. That's your functional reason to make this a text campaign. If you don't give me your number, I'm not giving you the details, right? Now, if you're giving away a lead magnet of some sort, you need their email, right? It's best to email a file, it's more effective to email a file and it's more effective for your business to build an email list, right? You don't give me your email, you're not getting what I'm sending. They have to play by your rules at some point. Now, if folks want to stop receiving texts from you. They can opt out, right? Or they can move to another message, right? Or use one of those options that I shared with you guys earlier today around, you know, maybe just stop that campaign. Or of course, use the word stop and it stops everything from you that is text, period. If they would like to modify what they receive from you via email, again, you can use automations like we've taught in other trainings. To maybe just remove that one campaign that they're on. Or they can modify their, their email subscriptions from you by clicking the link that is already at the bottom of the emails that you send out. Unless you've modified that, most people don't. So, so yeah, opt in preference. I don't really generally recommend having like a, I prefer to get everything via text or I prefer to get everything via email unless it's for a very specific purpose. You can use a campaign as email and or text. It's not the most effective option, but for your time, if you are wanting to be a buffet for people. Then, then you can do it, it's just going to send a text that says a few things, read more here and then click. Then they go and they read a page. It's got all that stuff on it, they could have just opened an email from you. So you really kind of get to call the shots here and choose how you send information. And people choose if they engage and it's a numbers game and your goal is to get out there and find more people that are interested in paying attention to what you have to say. And you concern yourself with the folks who are showing up, right? Because if you have to drag a horse to water, it's not thirsty. But we want to create a watering hole for people to arrive at because they are willing to engage, they want to engage and they want to engage with you, right? And that is something that you build up over time, that's why it's important to follow these best practices so that you have a good send reputation. So that down the line, as you have built smart, you have a highly engaged list. When you send a message out to twenty thousand people, it delivers well. Right, because you did the right things when you had a list of two hundred or twenty or two. Right, so always remember that abundance in your mindset is what's going to guide the best decisions. And that's true for everything in your business, believing that there is enough, that there is more. And, and so engage with your people accordingly, right? Focus on gratitude for those who show up, respond, hit reply, say yes, don't concern yourself with the folks who aren't paying attention. Continue showing up, right? And continue showing up in the right ways, following those right guidelines and you will find yourself. In the future, running a tight ship where you've got great folks who are responding the way that you want them to. Hey Donna, I see your hand up, can you let me know in the chat if you are looking for help with something? And I can bring you out really briefly. We are at the top of the hour, but I'm happy to help if you need it. There we go, can you? Can you hear me? You can unmute if you have a question.
Question, my computer has a mind of its own. Your question, but it was not I, have a great day.
Alright, I hope you have a great day too. Alright, fantastic, you guys, thank you for, for coming out today and, and showing up for yourself, for your business. We are always excited to have you here, we look forward to more questions from you guys. If you are looking to learn something new, let us know if there's something that you're trying to figure out. Or if you just need some guidance, right? If you're, if you feel like you're getting in your own way about any of this, let us know. We are always looking for ways to help and serve you, you can go to our group. We do have a Facebook group, you can shoot us a message and of course, be sure to take advantage of these opportunities to join us on Thursdays. We look forward to seeing you next week, I hope you guys have a great week. Take care, everybody.